Okay, it being six thirty. June seventeenth meeting twenty twenty four. The election was decided by the seat of order. Yes?
Yeah.
Brian?
Brian is here, yes.
Kathy, yes. And it's here, John.
John is here.
Okay.
Recording.
The first item is public comment on agenda items.
Well.
Okay.
Here we go. Sorry.
Put yourself on mute.
You've worked on that.
It's, 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 everything's muted.
Is yours muted?
Are we good? All right, I think we're good.
Okay. Fine. Is there, are there any comments? Yes.
I have some public comment.
Um.
Yeah.
Name and address.
William Bell. Bull Ringan Street.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank everybody that was involved with the, working on the cemetery down on Magnolia Avenue. It came out nice. It was all set for Memorial Day. The only thing they didn't get to was the double wall at the bottom of the, near the brook. And they'll probably get to that when the cemetery's burnout July. But I wanted to thank everybody that was involved with that. I wanted to make a comment about the beach circle. Parks and Rec had the DPW up there and they cut back eight feet from the wall, the stone wall. And it looks beautiful. I would ask of the board that if there isn't anybody that has any anything against it, that I would get down there and touch it up a little bit. The end of the stone wall where the castle is. And then there's like twelve feet of berm. After that, there are boulders under those berms. So if they could come back and dig into the berm and expose the boulders, you'd have another six or eight feet of swing in that circle.
Are you suggesting you would do that or we would like us to have the DPW do that?
Well, I, I could touch up where the castle is so you could see the end of the stone wall myself, but I can't
Okay, fine, yeah.
take care of the berm.
Are you prepared to fight Dave McDougal for this job?
Dave McDougal doesn't touch the circle. That's one of the things he doesn't touch. But I appreciate everything he does. And lastly, I'd like to request the removal from my, of my name in the Star, Community Star Award. Because when I started this, March eleventh of this year, I was requesting for a grand marshal for the parade. And it has taken a different direction, so I'd like to be removed from it.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Did you think that you were up for the award?
What's that?
Do you think you were up for the award?
No. I'm probably too young. Billy, thank you for your time. Billy, thank you.
Give your phone.
Phil, Phil, your phone. So.
Can you answer?
I have no chairman's report. We seem to be, including the things that we needed, that we listed for today, are there other action items that have occurred to anybody we should add to the list?
Yes. Isabella Bates to Mascanoma, I don't know if this is, I talked with Greg. I'm hoping very much that it will be resolved that the Strong Women Weightlifting Program can return to the community center. And that I don't know if it's an action item that's needed on the part of the select board to accomplish that. I know originally there was a contract that we approved at, at town meeting, which then fell apart. But I don't know if at this point there's an action item that's needed.
At this point, I believe that is entirely in the hands of the Hydroline Associates.
Okay, I didn't know if Manchester was contracting with them.
Not yet.
Not, not yet, so we, they, they know that we remain very interested.
No action item today. We, we can't unilaterally take their property, even for a couple of hours a week.
But we are hopeful that at least, even on temporary basis before the final things are in place, that there might be a resolution to the, to the class.
Seeing no other comments. You're interviewing Georgia Prigas and Diane Lindquist for the zoning board of appeals. Start with Georgia.
I'm Diane.
I'm Georgia. Yes, that's, oh, hi Diane. Yeah, I'm Georgia. Do you want me to stay seated or is the podium going?
You can stay seated. Tell us a little bit about why you're interested in this position.
Yes, so simply put, I love zoning, I'm a zoning nerd, I love planning. And I'm mainly on the municipal side, so I've, every town I've lived in, I've tried to volunteer on the zoning board, so I moved from Norwood, I was on that zoning board. And by career, I, I have my masters in land use and planning and community development. And most recently, I just left being the town planner in Danders for more than five years, so I staffed the Conservation Commission and the zoning board. And aside from that, I really love bylaws and I know, I know, it does sound
Who are you?
But I, I do find it very interesting and I, I recently made a career change. And I'm now working for the DEP in my environmental side. So I, I'm not able to scratch my zoning itch. And then aside from my personal interest in it, I, I think it's important to the community. I also think it's important to have a younger voice on the community, I say younger lightly, I think that's a very, it could be a broad range of ages, but it is good to have younger women representation on our boards. And I saw there was two vacancies, so it really seemed like a perfect opportunity. I have not been in Manchester long, I lived here about two, two, two and a half years. Was not raised here, but I live here now and the past two and a half years I've enjoyed it, so I want to be able to get back.
John.
Uh, really, thank you for raising your hand, apparently you've raised it in previous circumstances with other places. I look at the background and what you've said, and no training, no orientation, nothing is needed, you hit the ground running here, so great, I thank you.
You had me at zoning nerd. I was serious, your, your background is excellent and I, I think it's nice to have someone who is new to Manchester also represented on the board. I think that fresh set of eyes is important, so I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Go ahead.
You know what to get into. Have you spoken to the chair?
Yes, I had a great conversation with Sarah.
So we're deciding who's the bigger nerd later?
And just thank you for stepping up to do it, you sound way more than qualified, so thank you.
More qualified than some others.
Speak for yourself, Brian.
I think he is, I think he is, yeah.
I have no questions, thank you very much.
Are you, um, ask, gonna have individual motions on each candidate?
Well, why don't we, why don't we do it individually, then?
I move the select board appoint Georgia Prigas to fill Catherine Howe's term as a full member of the zoning board of appeals from July first, two thousand twenty-four to July thirtieth, June.
Second.
Are you ready for the vote? John?
Yes.
Diane, yes?
Yes.
Kathy, yes? Brian?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Diane?
Yes, I've lived in Manchester since twenty fifteen, very happily, I think it's a wonderful town. And I retired a couple of years ago from Boston University. I'm a warrior, practiced about thirty-five years before retiring. And I did a lot of different kinds of law, I'm not a zoning nerd, so it's
Need balance, yeah.
I'm kind of a bylaws nerd, I have to say, I, there's a fond spot in my heart for bylaws. I think it's an important, the zoning appeals board is important to most of the citizens, all of the citizens in Manchester. I think it's important to let these things be taken seriously and decided well. Sounds interesting, so I'd like to do that.
Jeff?
I don't really have any questions. Thank you.
Same question, have you spoken to the chair?
I haven't. The chair was derelict.
And you're aware, and I'll, I'll channel the inner Becky here.
Yes.
And the time, you'll have the time to forward for this?
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay.
Just one question, since zoning wasn't your primary background area, is there a particular interest? Or what, what particular area of, you know, that?
You know, as a lawyer, I practiced employment law, commercial litigation, healthcare compliance, a lot of different things, little bit of property. And I just love the law. And I love the process of reading something, interpreting it, applying it and all that sort of thing. So that's what it feels to me.
I think a lawyer's skill set is also very welcome on that, on that particular committee, so thank you for stepping up.
I have no questions, thank you for offering your service.
So this is your first shot at public service, shall we say?
Oh, well. Maybe so.
Okay.
I've done a lot of community work and a lot of profit boards.
Okay, but in terms of town government, your first?
Before this, I lived in Washington DC.
Not much town there.
No.
Before that, it was Tucson, Arizona. And I grew up in the South Shore, so I've never been in the community that is small enough that I really feel like part of the community.
So, so we engender volunteerism here?
Yes.
I'm glad to hear that. So great, I thank you for raising your hand and it will be a wonderful experience.
Is there a motion?
I move the select board appoint Diane Lindquist as the second alternate member of the zoning board of appeals from July first twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
The chair says that's after the first alternate is being replaced.
Oh, is that right?
Just a point of
Sorry.
And the first alternate would be me.
You're being replaced?
Swampy spot.
Well, that accounts for the smile on Sarah's face. I was wondering why she was smiling.
Well, Brian was staying.
We, we had spoken, Jim Dietrich, oh, should we finish the vote or?
Let's finish the vote.
Yep, you said it.
Yes.
Kathy, yes, Annie, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So now you make
Jim Dietrich was going to step down, but apparently at mid-eighties, he's got nothing else to do with his time. And so Sarah came back to me and the other, John Benares, who agreed to stay on. Did you talk, touch base with him?
He's staying.
He's gonna stay on, so, and I think that when we have some new blood coming in and new volunteers, we ought to make arrangements for that. So I'll tender my resignation formally or against this, is this it?
In fact, on July one?
So we are, we're Wednesday night, right?
Yeah, you're on Wednesday night.
Would you consider staying on as the, staying as the liaison between the select board and the, that would be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
So terrific, congratulations, I hope you both enjoy it.
Thank you, thank you very, thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay, but not required. Okay. We are a couple minutes ahead of the schedule for the Mascanoma Park presentation. Can we take up the consent agenda? Are there anything that we'd like to move from the consent agenda?
So I will just note that under the special events, we don't have everything finalized with the proposed movie filming.
Okay.
These are still a little, not nailed down. As often the case it seems with filming. So we don't need formal approval, but I guess it'd be, it'd be helpful to know if you are in favor of the basic concept and staff can continue to work out the final details.
Okay, so the question, we remove that from the consent agenda. For the rest of the consent agenda, are there any questions?
I just had one on the, on the concerts, the Manchester Essex Performing Arts, I didn't see the specified start and end times on the music, so they were using music amplification and so we're just gonna double check the start and end, end time on that because I think those fields were blank.
Yeah, I thought it's the so, actual hours of the event, eleven to twelve.
I'm sorry, that's the Sawyer, that's the public library, it was the other one that I saw the start and end times. I know the overall event was a certain amount of times, but it was the music piece. Just, I'd like some clarification on that, I was trying to find what page that is.
Historically, that's
Yeah, it was
So I think they're suggesting the end time is eight and then cleanup from eight to nine.
Yeah, historically it's from the same hour as it's the regular concert.
Yeah, I can't even read the start time, okay, so the start time and, so if the end time is eight o'clock, or the amplified sound?
That's, that's when sound ends and then they would, so that's when the concert ends and then they would use the last hour
Okay.
for cleanup.
As long as that's the last, as long as that's the end time.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of the filming at St. Beach?
It's not moved.
Second. Jeff?
Yes.
Brian, yes, Kathy, yes, Nancy, yes?
John, yes.
Okay. Now, what is the feeling of the board on the subject of the filming at St. Beach? John?
So far, so good. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with what I have, have read and a person that is representing the filming folks about, has obviously done this many times, she knew all the questions that were coming up. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with everything I've seen so far, when you say something is not there.
They, the, the date isn't nailed down.
Okay.
That's, that's the main thing.
All right.
I was gonna ask about the date, like what are we?
It was one day deal.
Two days.
Well, maybe it was two days, yeah, it was in there, but that might move around a little bit.
Right, so they were talking about later in the week and we are saying, no, it's better to be earlier in the week, just in terms of beaches.
Yes, no, Monday, Tuesday are best days.
You know, non, non-holiday Monday and Tuesday is preferred.
Who's responsible for police details?
They would be.
They will be, okay.
Yes.
And following up on Muffin's email today, the discussion at the Parks and Rec meeting last month was the desire to keep a partial, some of the funds that are paid to the town keeping, putting a certain, uh, Parks and Rec revolving account to help fund maybe the fireworks or whatever, so that was the only thing that we discussed. And then also the rest of the board.
Want to discuss that now?
We don't know what the, the North Department FD is gonna do at the time.
No.
No, we don't have a final, so let's not discuss
Let's split that right.
We had a question on the, on the graphics that were provided, there is a green box and a couple of pictures that says a few hours. And then there's a red box and I didn't see an annotation.
So the red boxes were the, were the majority of the film that would take place.
Okay. And would the beach be completely off limits to?
People can, people can traverse.
Okay, so it's just that section?
Yes.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And will Amy Adams be there?
I would assume so.
Okay, so I, I gather that the board is generally favorable to people who exist in the
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep working on it and trying to get a final proposal for it.
And it's something to put there in the next time.
Yep.
Very good. Okay. I think we're ready for the Mascanoma Park presentation.
Okay, I know that we have members of the the team from Fuss and O'Neil, they were the consulting engineers who helped put together the, the three-day charrette that was held a couple of months ago now. And that was the basis of the ideas that they will be presenting this evening. And so why don't I turn it over to Alex Maxwell, who's the project coordinator down at Fuss and O'Neil. And Alex, you probably wanna share a screen, so let me, let me do that.
Yeah, great, thanks, great.
Okay.
Great. Just get that up here. Hopefully that's showing now. Ian, can I get a thumbs up that you're seeing it on your end?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Great, great, well, thanks Greg and, and thanks members of the board, members of the community. I'm here with my colleague Ian Law from Fuss and O'Neil, we're here to report out on, as Greg mentioned, some of the work product developed as part of our three-day community vision workshop and design charrette. So before we get started, I know some, some faces are familiar in the crowd there, but for, for the new faces, I'm Alex Maxwell, I'm a senior urban planning engineer with, with Fuss and O'Neil. I have with me Ian Law, who I'll have introduced himself, Ian, you wanna say a quick hello?
Hi everyone, Ian Law, I'm a senior landscape architect with Fuss and O'Neil and really excited to be here and, and share the, the workshop results with you.
Great, thanks Ian. All right, so I will just flip through your piece here. So this evening, hopefully you're seeing the overview slide, are you seeing that Ian, or did it change the?
I am seeing, yes.
Great. So we'll just give a little bit of context behind this project and why, why we did this workshop here and then explain a little bit more about what we're up to over that early part of May with members of the community, members of the design team, and then the real highlight will be showing some of the conceptual design alternatives that were developed here. But just to give a little bit of the context behind the project, the town, as, as many may know, did receive for the second year in a row, a grant from the Office of Coastal Management, or CZM, known as the Coastal Resilience Grant. It's actually a, a two-year grant. And the purpose of this two-year grant, which started this year and will, will extend into next year, is really to begin implementing some of the actions developed in last year's Coastal Vulnerability Action Plan that was also developed with funding from CZM and that we also partnered with the town and members of the community to develop. So this is really the first steps in, in beginning to implement some of the near-term actions identified in that plan. This is actually an excerpt from the plan, one of our graphical scenarios for near-term actions to address coastal resilience along the inner harbor.
Alex, I apologize to interrupt, or?
Oh, you?
We're not seeing that, Alex.
Oh, thanks, okay.
Yeah, we're seeing that, yeah, you were just seeing the, the cover page.
I gotcha, thanks for letting me know.
While, while sorting that, could we reduce the size of the, and, and push it down?
Ian, are you now seeing overview?
I'm seeing the overview, yeah.
Okay, great.
About the project, yeah.
All right, here's about the project and then this is, this is the slide I just observed that, so all right, thank you, thank you for letting me know. It's like you juggle on multiple screens and I'm trying to keep the faces on the screen as well, but yeah, flag me down if, if you see, uh, see that happen again. This was the, the excerpt I was talking about here and I just wanted to briefly call out this, this area in yellow, that was what was identified in last year's plan to begin as part of the near-term action to explore adaptations to accelerate, or sorry, accommodate future recreational programming and, and floodable zones within Mascanoma Park. Along with actually elevating some of the critical infrastructure, enabling the generators at the fire and police stations, which CZM is also funding as part of this two-year grant, but we're really gonna focus on what we did with the the Mascanoma Park exploration here through the community planning and design charrette. So over the course of, it was actually from April thirtieth to May second, which seems like a little bit of a lifetime ago, it's hard, hard to believe we're wearing big winter jackets with almost a hundred degree weather on our horizon. But we did, did get a number of folks out over the three days to conduct a site walk of Mascanoma Park. Provide us feedback on, you know, how the park has been used historically, what's working well with the park, what's maybe posing a challenge, especially when looking at some of the flood mapping that was developed as part of last year's planning study of the, the entire inner harbor. And then our, our job was really to kind of take all that feedback in and then beginning to visualize some of the, the alternatives being discussed and what was really possible with the site. The images that you see in the left, that's part of what we call the walk shops, that's where we're walking the site. Listening to folks taking down feedback, we had boards with us with some of the foot mapping and then on the evening of the second day, we had a pinup right out in front of town hall with a couple of the early sketch designs. They really just get, get reactions from folks and hearing what they liked, what they didn't like about the different types of alternatives. And we had some precedent image boards and then on the evening of the third night, we also had a, a report out. Kind of a town hall style report out. But the pro, this, this three days really, really all started with a little bit more of an explana, or exploration of the, the sort of history of Mascanoma Park, stretching back to the, the old set vision for the park, which is actually on the, the screen here. Which you can kind of see a lot of the same design elements still incorporated in, in the park at present day here, minus most notably the, the parking at the point, but definitely the big open space, the winding pathways, the connection to the water. All of those felt really important. And concurrently, we also look, look back and credit to, to Nate for helping to, to pull these, Nate is a researcher, he's on the line, to help pull these, these images in as well, gave us a little bit of the history, looking back at Mascanoma Park over the years, this is from approximately nineteen hundred. Where of course you don't see much of a park, but you definitely see the, the salt marsh, beach road in, in the middle of the photo and then of course the outer harbor. You know, beginning around the nineteen thirties, you start to see some of that homestead vision. Take shape, the abandoned shell and some of the pathways, certainly no parking out of the front, but connection to the, to the water through a pier. And stretching into the fifties, now we start to see some of the, the parking out at the point and interestingly enough, room to watch boats and access to the water up by the point as well. You can also see the, it covered along Beach Street, it's open in this photo. And of course those from the, the site, although that's, that's actually a kind of tiny, tiny area that's closed, closed up now. Here in the, in the nineteen sixties photo, you see actually some of that recreational programming taking place on the open field with the, the baseball field there. And then in the eighties, just kind of another, another view, we see that baseball field's still there, some of the, the parking out at the end. And then Mascanoma today, which, which looks, you know, kind of largely, largely the same with, with some site improvements, with the play structures and some of the improved parking structures as well. So we looked at Mascanoma today through, through this lens, but also through the lens of what we looked at in last year's planning study, which was all really focused on the vulnerability to coastal flood events, and these are actually And these are actually images from the January flood events, where you can see large swaths of Mascanomo Park that get flooded in such coastal storm events. But we also heard and learned through also the previous modeling of the site that even tidal inundation can become a nuisance on the site when you have large tidal events. So it's not just storm events, which you're seeing in the images here, but even at present, you're getting quite a bit of coastal inundation in wet areas on the site. So taking all of that information on board and coupling it with this image that you see here, this is actually another excerpt from last year's plan, which just shows the extent of tidal flooding out into the future. Here, the darker blue, you know, kind of coloring in the harbor here, that's the tidal extents out to 2030. And then the kind of royalish blue, not the whitest, but kind of that interim blue there, that represents what will be the mean-higher high-water mark out in 2050. You can see that encroaching in on the southern portions of Mascanomo, where actually you're already seeing parts of that get wet in coastal storm events and some of those large tidal events. And then out to 2070 is where you're seeing that lightest blue extent there. So the real takeaway from this was that, you know, this place will flood. How, you know, how would the community like it to look potentially in the future as it phases from, you know, the park that we know today to potentially something that looks, you know, quite different in the future, especially as you look as far out as 2070 and recognize the degree of flooding that you will, like you see on the park. So here's just a look at some of the images from the walk shop here. We did kind of a Word cloud study of all the different things we heard about. We heard a lot about trees, but also wanting open space. We heard about the various events happened on the park. We heard about the working waterfront component. We heard about the need for bathrooms, expanding some of the play areas. It just kind of took all this in and used it to develop some of the conceptual designs that Ian will actually talk us through here and present one at a time, just the different alternatives that we developed. So Ian, do you want to step us through this and I can advance the slides as you sit next?
Sure. Perfect. So obviously, the first concept is do nothing, right? Continue operation and maintenance as usual. This next one we think is really important, and that is, you know, replacing park infrastructure in kind because now that we have all this data, it's gonna be really difficult to fund future park improvements through grants by just putting things back exactly where they were when they're so vulnerable to current and future flooding. And, you know, not really planning for the park, this park's transition into the future. So for the purposes of our workshop, we moved forward with, not moving forward with the do-nothing concept. We'll leave that up to you. Alex, I'm just gonna spend a few minutes on this existing slide again. Some of the things that I've wanted to mention that we think kind of held true as themes through all three concepts in different degrees and different geometries. One, we really wanted to honor the Olmstedian forums. You know, no matter what the improvements that we proposed, we still wanted to look and feel like Mascanomo Park and hopefully just a better, more resilient version. We wanted to really improve both the visual and physical connection to the water. You know, something to point out, Alex, if you can kind of show your mouse.
Sure.
You know, the parking is right at the prime view of the park. And we don't think that was Olmsted's vision. We understand the functionality of it. So exploring options for how we could relocate the parking potentially, you know, when it's time and it's at the end of its life, potentially do a more resilient location or a location that lets you take full advantage of all of the, to maximize the park's potential is something that was a guiding principle for us. We heard a lot about the need for flexibility, making a park that's gonna be usable for all ages and abilities. So that was something that was also a guiding focus for us. And of course, it had to have a focus on resilience to maximize the life of the park. But none of the concepts were a keep-the-water-out methodology. We do not believe that you'll be able to get it permitted. And so we wanted to demonstrate park enhancements that we thought were resilient, that would maximize the life of the park and but be a realistic transition to what we know is coming, you know, by 2070. So the other thing that we'll notice on all of our plans, we'll see that 2050 mean-higher high-water extents. And, you know, our different plans integrate that level of resilience to varying degrees. So with that, Alex, we can jump right into concept one. As I mentioned before, we, one of the things that was really kind of guiding a lot of the concepts was what do we do with the parking, how aggressive can we be? So on this first concept, this is the closest to kind of the existing of what you have. But what we did is we moved the parking further away from the point, a little closer to the playground, like one full 60-foot tray. And we also peeled it back closer to kind of the harbor to open up the visual and physical connection to the waterfront from, you know, from the main part of the park. So that was a goal in all of our concepts. This one, we did it a little bit, so this was sort of the lightest touch. In this particular case, this reconfigured parking, we actually added some parking kind of adjacent to where the worker, working waterfront parking is. And then kind of just massaged that existing lot to again open up the point. That resulted in a net loss of four or five spaces. So just being completely open about that, this version does lose a few spaces. We've elevated the bandstand. So where number four is basically the existing bandstand location, we've primarily kept that location for all because that is the existing high point within the park. So a slight elevation would maximize the bandstand's resilience into the future to the greatest extent possible. So we think it's in the right spot. We think doing a slight elevation and using the landscape around it to create a nice accessibility to it makes some sense and it would extend its life for as long as possible. We did hear the need to expand the park, the playground area. So that is reflected. It introduced some shade, some accessible surfacing. A lot of Olmsted plans always have primary green space and secondary lawn areas, so we were able to maintain that along with a large event lawn. One of the key things we've heard, which all the concepts reflect, is taking away the backstop of the ballfield and letting that open space be more flexible. Not to say that you couldn't still have, you know, youth sport practices or games in that field, but in a little less formal way, but really to maximize the potential and flexibility of that green space. Number eight that you see here, as you can see, that 2050 mean-higher high-water extent really penetrates into that green space, you know, in the next 25 years. So we thought about adding an elevated boardwalk section in that area that's really the most vulnerable to allow that tidal water to pass under and let that boardwalk actually become a feature of the park where you'd be passing over water and make that piece and that connectivity more resilient. Number nine is another feature that we've done on every concept to varying degrees, and that is really a pulling back of the point to make it a habitat exploration area. So to have physical access to little tidal pools and elements that can be done in a safe way, but really letting water be a future feature of the park and just adding kind of that level of ecology as well as resilience. It would still be structurally sound to be kind of defense of out at that point, but done in a more natural way. And provide some overlook seating out at that point. Really taking back that point is a key aspect to all the concepts. And lastly, the future connection to the harbor walk from the working pier there. If we go to the next slide, this kind of shows you how that peeling back of the point would work. Again, each concept does it in varying degrees. But essentially, the red dash line represents the existing grade of what the point does. So this area, this area here would be where the parking is with overlook opportunities there. But then the ability, as the tide rises and then recedes, to leave some water behind and some accessibility gets you all the way out at the point, but really fun exploration area. That's a feature in all of the concepts. And this is demonstrating that inundation from that 2050 mean-higher high-water to really show how, you know, that boardwalk connection can be made, but keeping the core elements of the park. One of the features I forgot to mention was the bathroom in the Harbor Master's office, which would be located in this plan in number three. So with that, I'll move on to concept B. Again, we let parking drive kind of the beginning of each concept. So in this case, we relocated all the parking in this area here. In this one, we have a net loss of zero. So we basically had a wash of the parking count. The Harbor Master restroom building would be located in this area. The expanded playground zone, elevated bandstand, basically in its current location, big event lawn, kind of secondary lawns. And then similar to the other one, A, we've got the large elevated boardwalk connection to account for that tidal inundation. We've peeled back the point again, created some interesting overlook areas, the connection to the future harbor walk. And then this one, number 11, that would be, you know, an overlook lawn space kind of again give you more flexibility, but right out at that premium view. Again, you can see the extent of the 2050 inundation and how that boardwalk piece could become a really, a nice feature to allow the water to kind of pass under and still have the bulk of your park elements in resilient locations. And lastly, concept C, which we believe was, from the workshop standpoint, ended up to be the preferred option. This locates the bulk of the parking parallel to Beach Street while still maintaining vehicular access for the working waterfront as well as offering a few temporary parallel spots off to the side of the point to still be able to kind of finish your coffee or take in that view or unload your vehicle to take out to your boat to transfer to the dinghy dock. And again, a lot of the same elements. This parking configuration actually has a gain of about 10 spaces in total. So that was an interesting component. Other features, the bathroom in Harbor Master's office is located right there at the beginning with a pretty good view of the harbor. Similarly, we've expanded the playground areas, but also were able to offer a smaller top lot. That was some of the feedback we got, that it could be great to kind of have a larger kid, you know, older kid playground and a smaller kid playground, but in close proximities for parental supervision. Again, the big open event lawn, elevated bandstand. Really, this one really nicely gives the park kind of back to maximizing its waterfront by pushing the bulk of the vehicles to the back, again opening up, peeling back that point, offering some interesting seating options to take in the view. And then if we look at the 2050 mean-higher high-water, what this one really does, probably the best of all of them, it pulls a lot of the internal walkways inland out of that inundation line. So at least over the next 25 years, the bulk of your park elements are still relatively resilient and gonna maximize their life for as long as possible. But the other thing that concept C does probably better than the rest is it really gives you a transition to the long term. And if we look out to 2070 and understanding that in 2070, the park's gonna have twice a day complete inundation, we know that Beach Street at some point will need to be elevated and potentially that offers the opportunity for that adjacent parking to be elevated if that was something that the town thought was a good idea. In addition, you could elevate the working pier and the restroom and the Harbor Master's office so that those could stay resilient. While the rest of the park, you know, we would extend the boardwalk all the way over to the working pier, but the park by 2070 would really need to transition to a nature preserve. That could still be very dynamic and interesting, but it's just the realities of the science. But to make this important landscape still something that's a valuable asset to the community. Alex, feel free to jump in if I mixed anything. Trying to get through it as quickly as possible then, so we can answer as many questions.
Yeah, no, you're doing a great, great job, Ian. I think the only thing to add is that by having some of that enabling infrastructure with the boardwalk and pathways in place earlier as part of maybe a phased approach to the transition, it would make the permitting, long-term permitting of those areas that have already been, you know, previously established that much easier out into the future. But I thought you did a nice job explaining that. And then this, yeah, shows some of that mean-higher high-water extents with, you know, an elevated Beach Street here.
And one of the, one last point that I forgot to mention is, you know, some of these moves, for example, making the big move to the parking, you know, theoretically that could be done in a phased time. Say your existing parking area gets to the end of its life and rather than having to reconstruct it in its existing location, maybe that would be the time to make that big move and some of these other improvements. So we, you know, look forward to helping you figure out the best way to phase it, to make this a reality and try to maximize the life of this beautiful park.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? John?
Yeah, so thanks to the review, very, very good. I had seen it before once, I was involved a little bit with some of the walkarounds. I've got a question, and I guess it applies to A, B, and C. What, can you tell me exactly what the mitigation initiatives that would be involved in these? And you're showing right there the boardwalk, that's one. You're not proposing to elevate the park, so the park's gonna, you know, with raising waters, it's gonna flood whenever it's gonna flood. But what are the initiatives that are really responding to or providing adaptation or mitigation to rising waters? I saw you wanted to raise the bandstand.
Yeah, the bandstand is a big one. And as Alex said, the boardwalk
Yeah. Yeah.
out, out on this, uh if you go back to that last image, Alex. Yeah, the boardwalk that's extending um out, you know, running page right to page left. Um that is currently where that 2050 line comes in the most. Um so that would certainly be one of the first major mitigation moves. Um because if not, those existing pathways on that section of the park are gonna surely get undermined and be a constant maintenance nuisance. Um also, the peeling back of the point um will naturally armor the point while still providing a feature. Whereas that's, that area is also gonna be particularly vulnerable um and ultimately lead to um, you know, the the lifespan of that zone. Um, you know, coming to an end faster than it than it normally would.
But that's not changing elevation, that's still where it's at and the raising waters are gonna be wherever they're gonna be. Um
Yeah, we're not holding back the C with any of these alternatives.
Okay.
Yeah, that's important, important to mention.
Yeah, that, thi- this, you know, the concept C, which is depicted in these three um in these 3D illustrations, is the most aggressive in pulling back the internal walkways so that they're at least beyond that 2050 line of daily tidal inundation. Um whereas before, you know, tho- those are going to get impacted um, you know, much sooner.
All right, and in in concept C, you mentioned possibly raising the parking, which I look as a mitigation issue. We look out our back window here, that's a problem a couple of times a year. I don't know where those cars go, to be honest.
Yeah, but just to drive the point home, um that elevated, the elevation of the the parking lot could actually be contingent upon a future possible elevation of of Beach Street as well. And you could tie into those grades. So that's where that really does become um more of a viable option.
When you say elevation, is this like one or two feet?
Yeah, it depends on where, where along Beach Street. But yeah, you're talking several feet of of elevation.
Well, several is more than one or two.
I mean, I'm looking at, say, one foot because maybe tha- that really is the difference right now between letting your car away after water or not.
It's not one, it's not one foot, I can tell you. Yeah, we have it detailed in in last year's plan um as far as those elevations. But it's, it is several feet in in some of those low-lying areas of Beach Street, uh both here by the the culvert and then um as you move down Beach Street past Tappan, um out towards Stingy Beach, there's another uh saddle point in there that you need to address with several feet of elevation as well.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I think the presentation was excellent and they answered a lot of my questions along the way.
I'm I'm uneasy about having parking right along B Street because although the park is fairly heavily used, there are lots of other parks in town that are also heavily used and more people drive by there. And destroying the view from Beach Street doesn't, by replacing it with parked cars or hedges, doesn't seem to me like a good plan.
I will, I like that plan. Only because I think it gives us an unbroken view, okay, that you're looking towards the harbor without a a field of parked cars there. And I think that it is Beach Street, it is a street and pulling on and off of uh uh I think with safety points, pulling in and parking as opposed to just driving around is uh might be blocking. I did, I just think, I just think that uh concept C looks like it's familiar. I think it's a, it's a great look. That's what's my opinion.
Um so I had a question. When you come into Mascanamo Park now, on the left-hand side, isn't there a strip of conservation land there now? Or no, is that wrong?
When you take conservation land?
On the left-hand side coming in, isn't some of that land tied up or no?
Not aware of, no.
Okay.
No, I I had a look at the the GIS maps and that's, that's all just town land and not
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, Isabel, Isabel dates to Mascanamo Street. I went to the final presentation and saw the A, B, and C. And I have been doing a Tai Chi class in the rotunda. And uh so I've been imagining and walking around this. And what I really love about approaching this is we're not being ostriches and putting our head in the sand and saying this isn't going to happen. It is going to happen. And I really quite love the elevated walkway idea. But one thing they did not mention, which is that by 2070, because of the ocean inundation, there will be no more trees because they will have all been taken out by salt. And therefore, it will be much more of a kind of a, you know, swampy, grassy area like this. And so it will be quite transformed, but it is an entirely new adventure with the elevated walkway that continues to give us recreational space and stuff like that. And I truly love the idea of getting rid of the parking lot at the end. I I I know going by on Beach Street, you're ni- nice to look over, but much better to walk out onto the park and have an unobstructed view of the harbor. I, as I've been living in the park with this idea, it seems better than that. Becky?
I'll, I'll just quickly add, if if you wanna get a look at what it will look like in the future, um you can, you can point your phone at this QR code and I'll point you right into the um the rotunda there. You can actually zoom around um on your phone while folks are making additional comments.
Uh Becky Jakes, 22 Forster Road. Um and I I wanted, when did the town, do we know when the town actually started using Mascanamo as playing fields?
So they showed some of that history at the beginning.
Which I missed.
Yeah.
I want to say it's as early as the 30s. Did we see that?
I think it's, they showed it around 61, I think the uh
Yeah, yes, 34, there's there's space.
Very, next one.
Yeah, so Greg, we have an open field at 34 and then in the 50s is where we saw just a little bit of a playfield. It's actually kind of hidden from view, but as you move into the 60s, that's where you actually see the formal baseball field.
I might suggest, I haven't seen it being used as a baseball field forever.
Exactly, that was exactly my thought.
I think my son was the last one to put it there.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Oh, what do we need, what direction do they need?
Well, so so their next steps are to finalize, I think Chuck has his hand up.
Yes.
The, now Alex and his team needs to finalize the report. And obviously, if if there is one particular option that is preferred over the other, that opinion would be helpful to be expressed in the report. Um if if you're, if you're in a position to do so, to give that guidance.
Chuck.
Chuck?
Yeah, although my comment was gonna kind of be in the same vein was, you know, I I don't think we we need like any sort of decision. So I just want to make it clear to anybody in the crowd or, you know, at home or, you know, watching this a week from now. You know, we're, we're not going out to do, implement any of these things, you know, tomorrow. Uh, you know, there's, there's certainly, you know, good to get this feedback and that, I think was the bigger idea behind, you know, talking to you guys tonight. Getting this kind of historical record, you know, when we look back in, you know, a year or two when we pull this off the shelf, you know, what what were we thinking at the time? And, and you know, things change. And we'll be picking it up to kind of bring in those next steps in kind of that timeframe, you know. Cause you know, we all know, there's, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of competing interests, you know, both for this area and space, but also other projects that we have kind of in the pipeline for the harbor. You know, all those things are being taken into account. We're kind of, you know, this is just, you know, making sure that we're bringing everything along in its, in its due time. So I just want to make sure of that right there.
Sarah?
Uh Sarah Creighton, 37 Proctor Street. Um I just wanted to echo Anne's point about, uh we're asked on the planning board all the time to look at views. And I think views from the, to you, to Isabel's point, the views from inside the park are improved with the Plan C, but more people view it from along Beach Street. And I think the renderings to me look like Newport. Um and um I think having all that parking as the thing you see first is very antithetical to what we've been, the the vision. And I don't have a good solution for a um maybe a hybrid. Um and I also remain optimistic that maybe there would also be a building in that view corridor with the harbor masters, that we can, the community center, some other option will be found. Um and I know this isn't a decision about that. But I think that the view from Beach Street um currently doesn't see the cars and I understand the problem with putting them on the point night. So uh adding 10 cars, you know, take those 10 cars away, at least for here. This isn't the best place for parking, nor do I have a solution for where to find 10 additional parking spaces, recognizing that the challenge there. But, you know, if we could uh keep green space right up against Beach Street, um at least for, so that may push the parking off to to the left or something. Um but I, you know, the biggest comment on self signaling is what we're gonna, what it's gonna look like from 128. And here we have a play, a iconic view out to the harbor where the first thing you look through is is parked cars.
See, I may suggest something to the board. The the common thread of all of the plans is the boardwalk. And I believe the boardwalk is in the same place on all three. Um
Yes, generally, gen- generally, yes.
Um I think we can all agree that the boardwalk would be an improvement and would give us something that is in place that we could, that we could maintain.
Yeah, I I was gonna go in the same direction, Anne. I believe that, you know, peeling back the point seems to be a theme on all three. Um love that idea. Um the concept of um multiple um terraces, if you will, or multiple fields, a large one and one or two smaller ones, I think is great. Um perhaps a solution or compromise on the parking can be found by, you know, breaking it up a little bit, right? Um it would be wonderful to have 10 more spaces, but um, you know, there are other ways we may be able to accomplish that. And if you have a beautiful park, maybe more people will walk there. So um I'm not opposed to parking directly on Beach Street. Um especially if one of the options we choose is, is, you know, having the playgrounds near there. I think that's also convenient for families. You know, you park, you have your playground there if you just wanna run in for a few minutes with the kids and let them blow off steam. Um, you know, that, that's nice to have the parking and the playground right there. So I think there's opportunities for compromise, but I think you're correct. If we could focus on agreeing on some of the common elements. And then um what I'd like Fasson O'Neil to do is help us understand the phases of the project, not sequentially, but so much as what are the things that we could do separately, right? And then when we get together with Chuck and and the FinCom and try and figure out the financials, we'll have multiple pieces represented.
Probably some sort of stepwise.
Exactly. So that's what I'd like to get out of this next
Okay.
presentation, is that one of the multiple pieces and rough costs, so we can figure that into our planning.
No, I think with regard to the parking, maybe there's some sort of a blend between concept B and concept C. I think that's what Kathy was kind of getting into. You have a little bit that goes along the water's edge and then just go up Beach Street a little bit. Frankly, the best view of Beach Street is the further out you go because there are fewer obstructions and you really see the tidal area. Once you start to get into trees, hmm, you can't see anywhere near as much.
But you see green.
You see green.
Okay, um is that sufficient direction?
Yeah, Alex, your team, you're getting enough feedback here?
Yeah, this is really helpful Ian, we we just really appreciate the time. And I do see Nate's hand raised, I don't know if you wanna get him in there, Greg.
Nate?
Yep, so I'm just gonna say that uh, so we currently have CBC funding to evaluate uh kind of the next uh phase of the current walkways. And, you know, hearing there does seem to be, you know, uh a lot of positive support for the, you know, an elevated walkway. Uh I think where I'm thinking is that we could take that, you know, this kind of support and start vetting out the walkway and using that CBC funding to determine, you know, what's gonna be required. It is gonna be, you know, somewhat of a permitting heavy lift um to get, you know, if we do a pile-supported walkway. Uh the benefit of, you know, doing pile supports is that the initial permitting would be the heaviest lift. And then in future years, when we have to, say, raise the walkway, you know, as uh, you know, water comes up, it would be a much less uh, you know, heavy lift on the permitting. So if that's something we, you know, we wanna do, you know, in the near term, um, you know, we could use that CBC funding to start that effort of the design layout uh and, you know, potentially permitting for that integral walkway.
Okay, um thank you very much. Um we're a little bit behind and I'd, I'd like to get started on on the uh wayfinding with Renee. So thank you. I'm sorry, I'm terrible with names.
Alex.
Alex.
Alex and Ian.
Alex and Ian, very nice presentation.
Thank you as well, thanks everyone.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Great. Okay, let me, you have your presentation on your laptop.
I do. May I share your table with you just a few seconds? Thank you. Uh Greg, if I could use the screen?
All right, you should be able to.
Great.
Screen there.
And Anne, uh given that we're 10 minutes behind, you want me to carve 10 off?
We sure need time for people to to comment.
Plenty of time for them to comment.
And and we, we have all read all of this.
The deck, yes.
So, go ahead.
Okay, so um hello, everybody. And I see that we have Mark Faberman, our consultant online, as well as um Lauren uh from Stock Exchange, who was part of the team. There's Jim Brown, who was a part of our team as well, as Rosemary, yes, also here, part of our historic uh district commission, Becky and myself. We've got other team members, Beth Bravo by the C, who's not here right now, but she was a a willing participant. So um with that, I will, I will give myself um the share. Uh let's see, it looks like we're still disabled.
No, you should be co-host. The share screen option, huh?
Host is disabled screen sharing.
Could you take your computer over?
And give it to him?
Yeah.
What we have on the deck?
Actually, I think if if someone who knows how to do this, we're looking at it, might might be easier.
Well, the deck is in our presentation, so can Greg or
It's in there, I mean, yeah, he's got
Yeah, he can pull it up.
Maybe just share it.
Got it in a PDF.
I don't, I don't know why it's not, it always shares. Did you make me the co-host? Cause I'm right here on 1626. I'm on the wrong Zoom, I'm on one of the other town Zooms, 16176, not Marlene Dolan. That, if that's on, that happens to be my husband. Embarrassing way, okay. Yeah, that could be it, so 16176.
That's what you need to be a co-host.
Okay, yeah, solves it.
That would, that would explain it.
Sorry about that, guys. I'll make it up, thank you very much, sir.
Okay, nice.
Right on, okay, what do you know?
Excellent.
Um so, hello and welcome. Um I've got a a a small deck here for you to look at. It's um basically a deck that's separated into three parts. Part one is kind of just gives you the context of why we're here at all, why do we end up with a wayfinding presentation? Part two is um meeting our commitment of having two different options for the town to consider uh if and if they do choose to go with a wayfinding solution for the town, for our um visitors. And uh part three is just a initial recommendation on six signs that we would recommend you uh step into the water with. So those are the three parts of the uh presentation. I'm gonna zoom right through um all of the upfront stuff. And if there's questions about that, we can um, we can return.
People can just speak up if that's all right, raise your hand.
Right, okay, so so um this, this basically is just a screenshot of a report So this, this basically is just a screenshot of a report for those that are new to this board that was presented in 2023 by the Civic Space Collaborative. And they had looked at a number of things for our town, one of which was wayfinding. And you can see that in the yellow. So this presentation is specifically reporting on that one bullet. The main things that they were trying, that they recommended that we solve for is, you know, people traveling in from 128 who doesn't, who don't know the place. There really is no signage on how to get to the town center. And I will say that municipal parking lots and the pathway from town, I'm just gonna skip around a little bit here, are things that people wanted highlight, to highlight. And I'll just continue. Right, okay, so this is.
You can slow down just a little bit.
Okay, okay. Is there anything, any questions on this page? I just, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do a death march through this, guys. Okay, so I did want you to see this page because the key thing that we wanted to make sure you were aware of is that because this is signage that has to do with wayfinding, we needed to talk with our business owners in town, of which we did, and other people. And we got a great amount of feedback from them that was quite helpful in formulating our opinion. And thank you to Beth and Lauren for that. So four things here. So the target population for this are visitors to Manchester by the Sea. We were due to have it done in June. We did it in five months. And the deliverable is two options and a draft plan. What is out of scope for this was broader community involvement, meaning let's go shop this out to the community, see what they like. We used this group that we brought together as the shop and Mark Faberman as our expert. And then we all know that many people feel we have too many signs in town, we're oversigned. And if you are of that opinion, we would recommend that there's something done about which signs we can relocate before we add more in or concurrently. Right, okay, so this, these next few pages are kind of, Mark wanted me to show you kind of a quick sweep of how do we finally get to our opinion? And he asked the whole group to go through one word, two words, three words in terms of what describes Manchester. Then he asked us about colors. He asked us about symbols or landmarks, and you can see Rotunda, Town Common, Coolidge Point. And then he asked, what do you think about braided street furniture? And for the most part, the group feels that there's too much, there's too many benches already and there's not a lot of room for street art or street furniture. Finally, these are just in, in our new planning, is, is Mark here? Hi, I've never seen you before. So Mark took this away, these aspirational things. These were things that came up in the meeting, they're not part of our scope, but he took these away to do what he thinks is right. So with that, Rosemary, you're gonna be our, you're gonna be, you're gonna be the reasoning behind the choices of these two options.
So we looked, Mark was very generous in showing us many communities' options, how they chose from their history, from their architecture, from their landscape, emblematic signs. And he encouraged us to look in our own community and find things that you've shown on the previous list, the harbor, the common, Rotunda. And we all really gravitated toward the Rotunda as an iconic and really favored symbol of this community, more than something like the Arbella. Well, we have that on the town seal. And we looked at the weather vane on top of the library as potential. We really found that this, this spoke to everybody. And, and we were unanimous in choosing this as the, the sign, the symbol for Manchester.
So this is option one, it's called a color rendering of the building. Mark also developed, this is what is called a family of elements. How's that for new terminology that we learned along the way? And, you know, to the far left is typically what you might see for entering the town type of sign, maybe on 128 way up there, you know, that's a, you know, this is who we are. And then you can see the various other kinds of signs that one might choose to locate in town. So that's option one, color. So this is what we call a silhouette rendering, same concept, it's the Rotunda. And we wanted to choose this option just because it was still the Rotunda, but also if the town felt that it wanted to have something more graphical like this or wanted to use this on people's shirts or, you know, the, whatever, it's a less, you know, there's other ways to go. And some people really would prefer less color. So I will tell you that the team personally liked number one the best, and that's why they put that first. But we think this is also a very good option. So let me just pause there and take comments, concerns and accusations.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
So we have our professional designer on the call.
Yes, we do.
So the, both of the signs, in my opinion, they look great, both options, they look terrific. I think we need to remember that there is a functional reason why we are looking at having signs. So if I'm driving, I don't have a lot of time to look at the words, you know, you gotta. So my question of the professional is which option is best for a quick reading of the words? Is one, is one better than the other? Cause I'd like to focus on function for a minute.
So, so before we talk about function, I'd like to talk about aesthetics as well as function. And in both these cases, I, the branding exercise we went through, and even when we talked about aspirational ideas, led us to want to do something very, very elegant. And I feel that what we've come up with really reflects of what Manchester by the Sea is. And in terms of readability, they both are readable. It is a quick read. We, we will limit any kind of directional elements, that is, to four. And then we'll have a hierarchy of signs in terms of sizes that will get you from one place to the other. Does that answer the question?
So you're saying there really is no difference? And, you know, if I'm driving by a sign at 25 miles an hour, I'm not gonna absorb the information on one sign versus another better?
Probably not.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I've got another question. So are we looking at these signs in the context of people in a car and not people walking? This is all.
Excellent.
Both.
Both.
They're both.
So there's different element signs for different.
The family elements allows you to have more of the pedestrian oriented as opposed to vehicular oriented.
Okay, well, vehicle can always be read by, by a pedestrian, but it doesn't work the other way around.
True.
So all of these are expected to be read by a, by people in a car, somewhere in general.
Not all, so.
Not all, some.
Yeah, for example, when you look at these family, I'm, I'm making it smaller just so you can see the comparisons between the two. So the two right here that are, you know, I'm circling, those are really for pedestrians. So for example, if we chose to do one between the walkways, we might choose something smaller like this because you're walking. We might choose one, you know, those are the decisions you'd have to go through. But for the most part, Mark, we had said, cause we asked this question, all signs would be able to be read by pedestrians. And except for a couple, they would all be read by vehicular due to the proportions of the signs.
Even, even small ones that Marlene circled there, if that had a P on it and an arrow, you could see that easily from a car. And parking, finding parking is, is an issue clearly that is, was discussed at length.
Can you see the silhouette of the person here? These are some pretty large heights as well as dimensions. This is a two-scale.
Becky?
Um, just, Becky Jakes, was part of the wayfinding group. The questions asked about readability and size, we, we definitely went over all of that and tried to make sure that we were primarily addressing cars initially, so that it's, it's more for people who are not familiar. Would you agree, Rosemary?
Yeah, and, and really the, the, to me, a lot of this was about public safety. Because as you drive into the town, the roads turn, they get narrow. There's parked cars, there's pedestrians, there's people with strollers, there's people on bikes. And you don't want people looking at their phones for directions. You want people looking at the road and seeing a sign that confirms what they may have seen on their phone earlier on their, on their journey. But when they get into the hairy, carry downtown, they're really not looking at their phones or their GPS. They're looking for a sign to give them that last mile, last, last yard destination.
So the first time that I ever came to Manchester by the Sea was several decades ago, and it was by train. And there, there, I had to ask, you know, which way was it to Singing Beach? So I can walk with my towel down to the beach. But these family of elements will reinforce direction, will reinforce a sense of arrival and reinforce a sense of place.
Yes. I, I'm very appreciative of having these two options side by side because the left one, the colored one, I find way more welcoming and friendly. The other one even looks downright ominous.
There's a certain Darth Vader Vader look.
I, I find, I find the one on the left to be very, and, and this is a funny word, but harbor and beachy to me.
Yeah.
As well, you know, it feel, there's a, 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 a joy to it that, that the other one doesn't necessarily express in the same way.
Yeah, I, I really like the, the color rendering, but I can't see where the silhouette might work. Maybe not on signage, but others, you know, like you're saying. Yeah, other things, sure, that you don't wanna print full color. So will we be retiring some signage to bring in new signage?
Where's Jim Brown? No kidding, Jim Brown.
That's, that's the goal in mind, yes.
Yeah, okay, cause.
We started looking at that, I think that was John, right, speaking? Jim Brown, part of the Johnson Improvement Committee, and I was kind of involved with this. But we did start looking at that. I, I have a, a few photos that I've taken already. Our goal would be at some point to make a presentation to the selectmen with some suggestions for signage that may be redundant or, or might be able, we may be able to get rid of. Also, just a comment on the walking versus driving. The placement of these signs will also determine what type of sign. So as you get close to the town, where there'll be more pedestrians, that's where we decided to use, you know, we'd use the smaller signs, you'll see as the presentation goes on. But as you're driving into town, that's where the larger signs, you'll be driving faster and there'll be less, fewer pedestrians potentially, or, so we also kept that in mind.
Let's, let's.
Continue.
Continue.
Okay. So the next piece was, what are all, what are all the types of, we went through, what are the things that we might wanna point out on signs? And let me minimize this, thank you, Rosemary. So on the left are the, there's two columns, which, we chose the column left are, as things that we would pick up as a wayfinding team. And not get into all the other things on the right. And I won't walk you through chapter and verse as to why we decided as such. But again, knowing there are so many signs in town, what are the least few things that will answer? And Lauren, you can speak to this, what our patrons, sorry, our shop owners are finding, which is people get off the train and they actually do not know how to get to Singing Beach. They do not know where they might get something to eat unless they're staring at Bravo, thank God. Or they don't know that there's a Boober down the street because they think town ends at the top of the corner. So these are things that our, you know, people visiting town. And we wanna increase business for our, our shop owners. So we have six signs recommended for phase one. And the first two basically are at, at one, this, if you can get a view of this. This is at the bottom of School Street coming off the 128 School Street exit. And this is at the bottom of Pine Street coming off the 128 exit. And we chose those two areas because those are basically the two heaviest trafficked places that people come into town who are visitors, people coming along 127 certainly, but they're probably more local. And this is your decision point for where to go. And we, so those are two places that we recommended.
So I can't read from here what you had on those signs.
I can tell you. Um, hold.
Is that in the table on the slum of Florence? In the table on the slum of Florence?
Yeah. So at the Pine Street exit, we would point to the left for downtown parking, beach, and one to the right for Tux Point.
Okay.
That would take care of it. At the School Street, at Junction of Central, it would be pointing to shops both ways, parking, beach, dining and Tux Point. So there would be five on that kind of a sign. And what you're, what you're seeing here is these are what's called, I think, Mark, directory signs. So the, the most you can have on one of those is six without driving somebody crazy. Then the other major point that we picked is right in the middle of town, and it's hard to see this. But this is the Crosby's, the wall in front of Crosby's coming down Beach Street to town. And again, this is for people coming, you know, in. That, you know, up front would be the same kind of thing. You know, the beach, restrooms, shops, dining, et cetera. And we also have one right here in front of, in general, Mari and the Water Company that would catch people coming in on 127 to tell them which way to which.
And pedestrians.
And pedestrians, right. And then finally, we wanna highlight the walkway between the parking lot of Town Hall and center of town so that people can know that it's fine to use that parking lot and get to town quickly. So those are the six signs, they're outlined in this deck right here to show you whereabouts they would go. And we did a general estimate of what that might cost. And it looks like it's about $4,000 to $5,000, but that just is a, a good estimate at this point. And I believe that's it.
To add to that estimate, installation may be additional depending on the sign fabricator and installation process. But those are pretty much up-to-date signage. This is a project that you can get very high visibility for. It's a capital project at a low budget that has the highest visibility. So it's an important project. Manchester by the Sea actually won a competition to get this consulting service from the state because it is the most desirable grant that communities apply for every year. So I just wanted you to know.
And I think there was only six.
Winners already.
There was only six chosen for this year, is that right, Mark?
There were, yeah, I think there were five, actually, yeah.
So we kinda lucked out. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so I, I've got a question, and that's coming south on 127. I don't know what the signs are at Washington and Summer. In other words, people that don't know where they're going, are they directed to go down Washington? And bypass? So the people that know where they're going are going down Summer in front of Crosby's. And they know where they're going, that's why they went that way.
Yes.
And the other people, I'm just wondering if there needs to be a sign in front of the real, real through there because of the, you know, that's a stop sign at the end of Washington before you then merge onto Central. Or I guess it's, it's Central, you're on Central then.
Are you talking about?
Right in front of what used to be North Coast.
Oh, yeah, 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 the Zax, the old Zax thing, yes.
It should be as it's coming down 127 and keeping people off of that residential street all day long.
We have control for that.
Well, see, I, I don't know what signage it is there, and if you don't know the area, which way are you going? You're gonna barrel up and go down the hill, or you're gonna go up Washington, I don't.
So we had, uh.
The state has signed that 127 is going on Washington.
All right, there's something to think about.
But when we are making the sign that's coming in, oh, sorry, we had a sign that was near the. But when we are making the sign that's coming in, oh, sorry, we had a sign that was near the 1600 Cemetery.
Yeah.
And we were gonna, because we don't want to get them all jammed down the residential area, we were gonna point them down Summer to town so as to relieve our neighborhood.
Fine.
And then, John, to your point, we were.
Well, then you don't need the one sign at the end, you're going to solve it up.
If we did, yes, so we, I didn't know if you would like to have a sign at that location, but that's an option.
So you mentioned driving, we've been talking a lot about this. What about the people coming off the train? Right now, they go straight to Bravo and ask directions. So I, I love all of what's been recommended thus far. I still don't see how any of these signs help that problem.
Help that problem. It's funny you should say that.
That's definitely a kind of a directed one.
They, they don't, actually. And there's two ways we thought about solving for that. One is a concept that's in process right now, which is kind of like those walking maps that you can get as a tourist that shows what all that is, and they can get that online or their QR code or it's pasted on the side of the community center or on the train station, so there'd be something there. And then another would be, we plot a sign somewhere right in, right in that parking lot, near the station.
I noticed that all of the other places where you've put signs are public property.
Yes.
The train station is.
It's not our, it's not ours to pick, right?
The train isn't ours, the parking lot isn't ours, the parking lot for the train isn't even ours.
Yeah.
Community center isn't ours.
Trick question.
Well, we did talk about phases because of the cost and the number of signs and the potential visual impact of having, I think we came up with 20 locations where we potentially could put signs.
And we carved it to 10.
And so it just seemed like a lot to start with 20 locations.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think you could, you know, set them up and take a look at what information's on them. I think your approach here that is being presented is very minimal. Most towns and cities would do 20 or 25 signs to begin with. And remove a lot of the redundancy immediately. The worst example of a redundancy is in the town of, or city of Salem. And they have signs they put up every five years, but they never take down any of the old ones. So you have layers of signs this work place there.
You've got a little.
Reed Park was the other.
Yeah, Reed Park.
Yeah, for the boats.
With the boat, with the boat traffic.
Yeah, that's right.
Exactly.
Yes.
And I think it did public, did we choose public dock S1 or the public? But we could, we did talk about that. We did not choose the public boat launch or public dock, okay.
But if you have something.
But you could add a sign to have that there.
You have something there.
And have one that says Museum and Library, right?
Yes, that's right.
I mean.
Yeah, well, those last.
Only, only possible.
The last two signs you're talking about are pedestrian. All the other ones really are largely driving.
Yeah.
For those of you that attended the quarterly Chamber of Business meeting last week, we discussed putting temporary sandwich boards with QR codes, AQR code, at the docks and at the train station. And so we actually have that in process, we order for the sandwich boards on Friday. I have a meeting tomorrow at the Chamber to talk about a potential landing page or how we're going to do that.
Thank you, let's try to focus on what we're doing here rather than what's going on.
But this might, this might fall into that because we may be, I'm going to sit down with Marlene and suggest that that is part of the signage. We've done a lot of work and spent a lot of money at directing people to the docks to come into town. And it would be nice if they could get off of the docks and know where to go. And the same with the train right now. So I think it is part of this, we just really didn't put that much thought into it, into the docks, quite frankly. But I think it is important, and I believe it should be part of this program.
So question, so this, these signs are great for helping people find places. Not so much finding parking.
It's in there.
Is it in there?
Yeah.
Which ones am I missing?
Yeah. So that, that was.
Parking is always in this, yeah.
That was wherever there is, so there's, there's basically going to be parking to be had at Mascanomo, at the Town Hall.
Right, I was just, I was looking at the design of the signs, and they have.
Yeah.
Oh, that's wrong.
No, I know that, I'm looking.
You're actually looking at the sign.
I'm looking at the signs.
Okay, like this?
Like that one there?
Like with this sign?
Yes, yes, I'm trying to, I know the big P, but that one was not checked off.
You know, because we could decide, the reason why I didn't check that off is because we were going to put parking on to minimize signs again. And it's not, because this town is, needs to have slow change, as we all know.
Just for clarification on what my question is, I'm looking at the slide, it has the six red checkmarks of the recommended signs.
Yep. Yep.
That one, yes, thank you.
So that checkmark over that C1, C1 and 2 are kind of interchangeable. So you might decide that, for example, we were going to have a sign that's right before, or right near the entrance to the town parking lot on either side of the driveway. We would just put the big P there.
That's, that's what I'm asking about because I, I do think we need to help people find the appropriate parking spots so that they're not wasting their time circling around resident parking-only streets.
And the D signs also could have a P on them with an arrow.
Right, and the other ones just look so small, like I said, I'm just thinking of people driving and moving.
Well, they're, they're 18 inches high.
Right.
By 15 inches, so they're not, they're not that small. But that's what you would see for a no parking sign in a lot of communities.
So you could in fact, put a parking sign below the other sign too.
Yeah, yeah, what's good about this system is it allows total flexibility. So, you know, if, if it could be figured out how to put a sandwich board at the train station, maybe we could figure out how to put a directional sign there as well. I'm not sure, you know, that the MBTA is very.
We're not really trying.
Generous with their, their, their cooperation.
Thank you.
So, so.
I wanted to just make note that the business owners involved are the ones who are asked constantly, how do I do this, that, or the other? Yep. They're asked for Singing Beach, they're asked for restrooms. And Lauren, what was the third, or Marlene?
Restroom, Singing Beach, and, is it? Uh, where to eat?
Food.
Where to get food.
So those.
They asked for, they asked for what to, where they can get coffee, where they can get lunch.
Okay, so food.
Do they park, where is there more shopping? Like they don't know to go up around the corner.
So, thank you, Lauren, that's why what we did, when you, when you look at the deck and you see the signs, the items on the signs reflect what has the questions most frequently asked of business owners.
I guess I didn't see how you would find Laughing Gul, which is in one direction, and Booberd, which is in the opposite.
Good point.
The signs say.
And arrows in both directions.
Slash dining?
What, what I ran into when I was a stranger in a place was a sign that had a map with restaurant name, shop name. Now, I understand that you can do that with.
Yes, we can. We thought about putting one of those right in the middle of town because then you could walk up to it and look at it and see, we're all, you know, coffee and lunch and all that. And that too would probably be, I mean, ideally suited for the grassy knoll in front of where the gas station is because it's kind of right there or near the train. You know, where people are walking off the train across from Reed Park or somewhere there.
Honestly, that feels like a maintenance nightmare.
Yeah.
And having experience doing this kind of stuff, I think you got to think about.
Yeah, QR code.
What it is you're going to maintain, yeah.
It looks like a shopping mall, people.
Yeah, yeah, because we wouldn't want an electric, okay, so, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if you are, the electric, the electronic, that would so much easier to update.
You're right.
They are, but it's.
That also needs to be maintained, and someone needs to be responsible for it.
But also signage.
We discussed that, and we didn't think that it was necessarily appropriate for the ambience of, and the existing ambience of Manchester by the Sea.
And the signs do have to go.
Digital signs are.
No, I'm not talking about the digital sign, I'm talking about a QR code on a nice sign.
Oh, QR codes can go on any of these.
Right, exactly, that's, that's my point.
Yeah.
You have a hand craced, you can't see it on the whole. It's Terry Coleman has a hand.
Okay, Terry.
Good evening, Terry Coleman, and by the Pedestrian Committee, we review this and commend the work that the team has done, it's excellent. Couple of suggestions. If we could extend the MBTA platform so that it connected to the street and the crosswalk that was recently installed, there might be an option then for people not to cross the parking lot, the active parking lot, walk to the end of the train platform and cross the street and assign potentially there Reed Park. And that's one. Two, as you all know, Pine Street, well, with the COVID project, Pine Street's going to be a significantly different operation in '25. So perhaps you want to think ahead to installation, that particular sign might be delayed or you're going to have to cover it in some way, shape, or form in about a year when that, that major project takes place because the directions are going to be totally different for some period of time. So otherwise, excellent plan, we endorse it.
Thank you.
What do you need from us?
For you to, as a foreword, please let us know which, which view you prefer for signage. And in consideration of the recommendations of some signs, and I, I think there were very valid points about the parking and the, and the people coming off the train adding something in. Let us know how you would like to proceed in terms of getting any of these made.
Do we have a preference among the signs, among the color versus blue and back blue?
I like the color one.
I think the color is visually appealing.
Okay.
I have no preference, I have no preference, honestly.
The color reflects the KPN license plate.
Okay, I, I think, we will go with just a consensus that we prefer the color.
Should we mock one up perhaps, Anne, so that you can look at one and see how you like it in real life, or?
I think you're not currently considering signs for the two 128 exits, is that right?
Uh, no, we did, we did note them on the map. And what we would recommend is that if you did want to have kind of like a sign that said, here you are, Manchester, you're here, even though it says it already on the sign, the green signs, we would recommend two of these gateway signs. One on the right coming into town on Pine and one on the right coming in on.
Just having an arrow indicating which way you go to get there.
Good point. Yes.
But, but those, those are not the things we're currently looking at. We're currently looking at.
No, but that is a good point, when you're coming up school, do you go left or right to Manchester?
Um, if you, you were talking about one of the four of Pine and Central and Ridge.
Yep.
And that would indicate Tux Point in one direction and the rest of town in the other direction. One at school and Union and Central. And that would probably have restaurants in both directions.
Shops both ways.
Okay.
Parking both ways. Or mostly to the, you could decide, because parking is down on Mascanoma, and there is also parking along the street.
You can't go wrong, no matter what you do.
I know.
It tells people there are things.
Stuff in both directions.
Yep, okay. Did you have?
Except the B.
Did you have a plan for signs to indicate the cut from the Town Hall parking lot?
That's a good question.
At both ends.
Yes, we did. In fact, those of the few signs that we recommended, we're recommending one in front of the KPN, you know, right where the current piddly little thing is, which everybody makes fun of.
It's better than what was there before.
No, no kidding. And then there would be one at the walkway, that's, we have to decide on that because will people coming into that parking lot know to look backwards to come, you know, if they're not new? Because the cut through is right against where the water treatment plant and what is it, the Mason's Hall?
Yeah.
So we'd have to figure out how to, I would hope, you know, Nate, and to see what his recommendations would be as a civil engineer.
We, we had talked about having something more along the lines of a kiosk in the parking lot. Not one of those electronic, but, but something that, that could maybe show a map of the downtown with the direction to the walkway and the shops and dining.
Again.
Again.
In the parking lots. Up, up, update. Well, no, we don't have to put down specifically what the facility, what, what restaurants and shops.
Things that won't change.
But just a map that's showing where the train is.
Roads.
Train, beach, walkway.
Restaurants.
QR code.
Exactly.
I think that would be very helpful, actually, because I remember the first time I tried to take commuter rail, I'm like, I'm walking all over the place, how do I get, where's the platform? It's not, it's not easy.
But it wasn't, when we talked about that, we felt that it, it might not be welcome to have a large kiosk on the common.
Can you show pictures of on the left?
And that way, once you get into the major parking lot, then there's more specific information.
But that's this here.
Oh.
So it's a flat, two-sided sign, but it's pretty large.
Yeah.
Double height of a person.
Yeah, it's huge.
Yeah, so, but, but you can, we can do maps and.
Where would that go?
Back in the parking lot, I mean, it's not, I'm sorry.
Out back here.
Back here.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
And then again, I think was maybe phase two, because we're trying.
But, you know, if you want to do it all in phase one, we're fine with that. We just wanted to gently, like, get the town used to having this so that it would be welcome. So it's your choice.
Do you keep in mind maybe the flexible budget of EPWs so that we could have a little trial without having to wait for another fiscal year?
What, okay. You're not in your head.
We're not talking a huge amount here, so.
Yeah. Do you think we could put up the six signs that there?
It's impossible. Yeah, so just to be a fighter of cost.
So we would like to get a closer estimate based on the color picture.
Yes.
I think the signs that you've recommended, the signs and signs that you've recommended for those locations seem appropriate. Firstly, I would add a parking just at the entrance to Town Hall.
I agree, and I also think that what was brought up here, and I, it's a, I should have had a V8 moment, what you said. People coming off the train, they need something right there, and we have to solve for that. We were always hoping that the community center would be a visitor, you know, that, that would attract people there. There could be indoor maps, there could be a thing there, that was, we were hoping in that direction. But, you know, we can also think about the signage.
Is it important we consider just going ahead, finding money out of a EPW account?
Yeah, for, for six signs.
For six signs?
Yeah. What's that total?
Is it more than six, or are we just?
Well, phase one is six.
Do six.
But you, you discussed many more. I, I would leave it a little bit open and then try to develop a budget and see what, what fits. And then you, you phase them according to your budget. But you, you've already added four or five more to this with parking and location near the train station and, and, you know, even the parking lot at Town Hall. So you, you've added quite a few, so I would, I would not restrict you at this point and let us come up with these elements and show them to everyone and say, this is work, that's another aspect of this.
So, so we're, we're at crunch time because we're at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So we just need to do this in the next week.
Yeah, so what I would recommend is, I would, our best thinking is those six signs. I think we should add in, and it's not a lot of money, the notion of parking, make sure we have two well-marked parking signs for the town lot. And I think we need to come up with something also not expensive for the train. So that would mean, if you're looking at costs. Figure fourth, you know, because these are all in ranges. Figure four thousand to five thousand is the range if you round up here. If we were to add one more, you know, somewhere in around the train, maybe of this size, that's another 500. And if we were at another parking sign, that's another 500. So it'd be a thousand. So if you added a thousand there. Now, these numbers should be looked at.
I'd also consider F as a very flexible sign for pedestrians.
Yep.
So we have some money that has to be spent by the end, that we can spend before the end of the fiscal year?
I gotta sit on a check. I'm assuming we can.
We'll take your money out of Chuck's pocket.
Right.
Yeah.
One more or the other, I think we could find, you know, six thousand dollar range.
Six thousand dollars, that's really.
That's about it. I think that would be great.
That's right, that's part of my recommendation.
Is that with DPW doing the installation?
I'm sorry?
Is that with the DPW doing the installation? Because those are prices for signs, not installation.
Right, they will install.
Does it include the pole, Mark?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so just one last question here. So what, what signs are disappearing?
Let's not disappear signs. That wasn't without.
The walkway signs disappear.
Yes.
Well, that's enough for now.
Do I have a motion to encourage the wayfinding group to put together a package of six, eight signs, one, two for parking and the six that they've described. And to arrange to have them installed with the lights that are currently lit.
So I moved, friendly movement, the colored option.
The colored options.
I second on that.
We ready to discuss? We ready to vote?
We're ready to vote.
Good. John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy says yes.
Yes.
Brian says yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Great job.
Thank you, very nice job.
Work with, work with Chuck and Greg and figure out how to make this happen.
You got it, shall do.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Kathy and.
Yes.
To those who.
Perfect.
Mark, I think the show is now yours.
Okay, well, it's mine and members of the planning board. So at the last planning board meeting, well, as you know, for over a year, we've had the Capitol Board working on the MBTA zoning so that we can comply with the new mandate, the new state law. And at the last planning board meeting, we voted to submit to your board the draft of the zoning that would allow the town to comply with the law. What the planning board is now asking select boards to do is vote to forward that draft to EO HLC, the Executive Office of Public and Civil Services for a preliminary review for compliance with the law. And they will do that within 90 days, hopefully a little quicker so that we can get comments back to make final edits prior to the dismissal to the select board to be on the warrant for the fall town meeting. So we, the draft that was sent out to the select board was reviewed by town council, reported that to them. Had some discussions with them on that and so we have that draft. It's the red line we're using there. I believe Jonathan Murray, our best counsel, there he is. Is on as well in case there are any legal questions that you may have.
Well, the first question I have is that we were sent something by the planning board and now we're going to have something else.
Well, what you have mostly is, is just some leave lettering by town council.
I guess what I'd like to hear from the, from the planning board members who are here, whether they have seen those comments and whether they think that that anything significantly changes what they approved, such that we should actually should go back and approve what they approved. Sarah?
Well, I'll just say that this is a, what we're asking for is the permission to submit to HLC. So that's the first thing. This isn't a endorsement of this, you know, so this is a procedural vote. It's not, maybe we could adhere from Jonathan if there are any substantive change, substantive changes. I think the board will probably make final tweaks based on town council's review, but it's my understanding it wasn't anything terribly substantive, so Chris has looked at it.
Yeah, I looked at it carefully and I think it's fine to send to the state. I think there are some tweaks that are going to happen along the way, of course.
And after Wade comes back and even between now and when it comes back, it probably.
There'll be more tweaking, yes, of course.
So this isn't done, done.
This isn't done, done.
Okay.
Several steps.
This is the general structure of what we're talking about doing. We're trying, we're sending it to the state to have them say, no, you're way out of bounds here or what you're doing fits our model.
I guess the thing that concerns me is the last, it's the last page, 593 to 595. This seems like a, I'm not sure I understand what the change is here.
Our current bylaw says that all zoning changes are two-thirds. The state has changed their regulations, their requirements. And this is asking the town to adopt that officially. We have in the past, had, recent past, had zoning changes that were approved by a majority. I think, no?
Probably two-thirds.
It's always been.
We did take advantage of that. We proposed some but never got a vote at all, maybe.
Okay, fine. I knew it would go this way, so.
So where our bylaws say one thing, this would change our bylaw, right?
Yes.
Or is it the state's?
This would make, this would make our state, our bylaw conform with the state.
With the state. Right now, we don't. What happens if the people in town don't want to do that?
Then we have to pass everything by two-thirds.
It's not, it's right, let's.
Jonathan.
Okay, Jonathan, okay?
We have that discussion.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, Jonathan Murray from KP Law. So the, the change that I'm seeing here, number three, is as the chair indicated, the legislature amended the zoning act to require only a simple majority vote for certain types of zoning amendments. So this would bring the bylaw consistent with the zoning act. Say, for example, there was a special town meeting tomorrow and we had a zoning amendment that could qualify for a simple majority under the zoning act. You could still proceed notwithstanding your local bylaw because the state statute would control. So this is really a kind of housekeeping measure, in my view, to bring your bylaw in conformity with the state act.
I'm not saying I don't do or don't want to do that, but I, what I see is this thing going to town meeting and someone wanting to make an amendment here to keep it the way it is.
So I also think it might be advisable to have this as a separate article.
Yeah, right.
And say at the beginning.
Either at the beginning or at the end.
Well.
But yeah, at the beginning would make more sense because it would be.
Do you know what you're voting?
I think Sue has thought about this.
I have, so.
This is Sue Gilbert, who doesn't know.
On the planning board. So the issue is quantum of vote, it's called. And it's the state law now that many amendments to zoning are subject to a majority vote. Whether people like it or not, that's the law. And this change would simply make our bylaws conform to state law. Right now, they don't. And we need to keep changing our bylaws so that they do conform to state law. One thing that is important, Greg's point, in doing it as a separate warrant article, I agree that each of these changes should be separate warrant articles. Because, for example, the change to the marijuana distribution requirements, that's not a zoning change that can be decided by a simple majority. That does require two-thirds. So if we lump it together with the MBTA zoning, that wouldn't be a good idea. I think it would be much easier for everyone to understand if each of them were drafted separately.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of splitting it up, but.
I don't agree with that. I mean, I think there are some issues about having competing questions on the same ballot question.
Let me interrupt just slightly to say that the purpose of this is not to put it in front of town meeting.
Right.
This is a draft for the purpose of having the state review it and tell us where we are relative to their understanding of 4A 3A.
It's a compliance check.
It's a compliance check.
Period.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So the question is, is it good enough to go forward for a compliance check?
I guess it's just somewhere down the road that I'm thinking.
Yeah, is the state going to review the marijuana issue even though it's the last paragraph here? Or they're really looking at this from an MBTA perspective and that's it?
Yeah, it's probably not the vision of the.
Actually, Sue.
They will, the municipal law unit will review it because we're sending it simultaneously to the municipal law unit and HLC. And they will review that to make sure it is consistent with state law, not having to do with the MBTA zoning.
In fact, they are going to review our entire zoning bylaw, I think.
HLC will.
HLC will review our entire, to see if there are any pieces in our zoning bylaw that are not corrected to be compliant.
So right now, the state says that voting with regard to regulation of marijuana business is a two-thirds vote. So when they come back with their comments, they make certain comments on the MBTA, but this, they will say, no, you can't do this. Because if we submit this as it is, we're saying that's a majority vote.
Well, I think we go.
Are we, are we getting cotton weeds here?
Yeah, I just, it doesn't make any difference what they say on that. We're going to focus on the MBTA.
MBTA here about at this point is to make sure that the, the, the 4A 3A, we're complying and conceptually we've hit the mark. Is that correct?
Yes.
Everything else is housekeeping later on.
But I think there's other stuff involved here that people are thinking about too.
All we care about is the state at this point.
Right, I think, what I would suggest is, because you're right, Jeff, you know, there's a lot of nitty-gritty detail. What I would suggest is, I believe this is good enough to go forward for a compliance check. What we should also discuss though is let's backtrack from a potential town meeting date, okay? And commit to having a clean copy to review, okay, far in advance of what we have to approve a warrant, okay? That's what I'd like to see because I think we're all talking about valid details, but we're going to have to re-discuss everything because we haven't got the state feedback yet. So I think this is good enough, but let's set a timeline that we are going to commit to so we're not getting stuff last minute.
So to that point, I don't think we should wait until the end of August or September to work on some of these details. I need to keep going even though we don't have all of the state comments. Some of these details are independent of their comments.
Exactly, yes.
My feeling, my thought, we're seeing you have discussed MBTA zoning, the 4A 3A. Everything else is answerable. So let's get this in front of the state.
Yes, we need to, from a timing perspective, we need to get it in front of the state because they, in their regulations, they say they have 90 days to do the review. So we really want to try and get that back in less than 90 days so that we have all of September to discuss any comments they submit. We'll have the municipal law unit comments beforehand, before that. Jonathan has indicated that.
He had his hand up. I wondered if he would.
That, that, that might happen quicker.
Yeah, so the town planner's point, just for the board's information, the EO HLC has strived to get their comments back within 90 days. Based off of our experience in the spring, you should know that it's closer to the 90-day mark rather than before. And even if you, you know, we've had instances of the most perfect zoning bylaw ever, but EO HLC still has comments. So just, just for the board's information, the sooner you can get it in, I think the better it is just because you're giving yourself that cushion in the fall to make changes, have your planning board hearing, and then address any comments that HLC has.
So we can run concurrently then. The planning board can run concurrently with these other comments. That's good.
I mean, I think an ideal scenario is to have a final version by the first of October. And that's going to be really tight. It's going to be very tight, but then that would give, you know, a good six weeks of having that final version, making the rounds in town. So the targeting of mid-November special meeting. I just hate, I don't think you should go past Thanksgiving. I think, I think you should do it in November. If at all possible. Well, there is some good news, which is the consultant we used helped design the project. So we're hoping that her guidance is going to have some weight with the state. So we're not doing this in a vacuum. There will be comments, but I'm sure. Of course there'll be comments, yeah. You're right. Hopefully they're not so substantial then. Yeah, it's a rerun. I don't think they, I don't think it will be.
I think we can envision that the, there are two types of, or maybe three types of buckets of input, at least as I envision it. One is does the basic model apply? And I think we're pretty confident that we follow the state's model, that the districts, the density and the parameters. And that's the real meat of the, of the work. And then there's how have we written the rules around implementing those districts? And it seems to me that that's where they may have some wording changes or some. And then the third area are the design standards and the site plan review, which again, they may have some applicability and some comments around those that we can tweak. But I think the, you know, if you think of it in those buckets, the first is the real compliance, the districts and the density. And I think we're, we believe we're in very good shape on that. And everything else is the pieces around it. And also the, and then there's the strategy, which is outside of the, of the, and the information to the public that is outside of that review. And I think that is something that we need to start working on right away. And, and also there has already been, how many public forums? A number of public forums. Whatever, density walk, website. So, so we've started that work and, and more needs to happen to, for sure.
That's me.
It's you, we're just.
I move the select board pass the draft community housing overlay district zoning bylaw along to. I move the select board pass the draft community housing overlay district zoning bylaw along to the state for review.
Friendly amendment, as amended by our, our town council. Second.
Accept that amendment.
Ready to vote? John?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Yes.
Kathy says yes. Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's mighty to hear.
Thank you to the task force for all its hard work.
Yeah.
This has been a task force, and to Mark. Came in just at the nick of time.
Oh, thank God.
Yeah, Mark was thrown right into the bathtub.
I'll send it off next week.
So that would go out by next week, then?
Yeah, well, there's, there are some forms that we have to put together, so I have a meeting with Emily on Thursday, our consultant to put the forms together, um, and hopefully she will have it ready to send out next week.
Right.
Good.
Just, Jonathan, do you have any guidance on the actual submission, in terms of those forms?
Uh, and I'm having help, I, I suspect I'm English, uh, how to, how to submit them. I'd also just say for the, the board's benefit, we've, we've developed in our office a good relationship with the two people at HLC reviewing these, and then we have a good relationship with the municipal law unit. So, um, if something comes up after we've submitted this and some board or someone has a question, just let me know and we, we have back channels to get those answers pretty quickly.
That's great, thank you.
You're good?
Thank you.
Great. Another milestone.
Yeah, so along the way.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think the next thing, our liaison update. Um, John, you have a better handle on who's on liaison, so do we have a liaison to the ConCon at the moment?
Uh, Brian, I think is taking that over, it's a little gray as to when that is in effect, but nothing has happened.
I haven't, uh, even looked at one that's meeting. That was sort of hard.
Yeah.
Unless you want it back.
I, I've never had it and I don't want it. Okay, fine.
Okay.
Somebody asked me and I didn't remember.
Okay, uh, Brian and I swapped, I took library and he took ConCon. Well, I don't know, library's got an application, it depends what happens with the application.
Uh, I can speak, uh, pickleball was starting for, uh, mid-July, I think, installation. It was, it was an issue last week. There's some people climbing the fence. Didn't realize that you really needed to take pickleball that bad during the time. Now it's now at a ten or twelve foot fence. It's fascinating to me. I don't know how they plan on getting out either, but. So, um, I was just bringing and bearing it. I drove by, uh, midday on Saturday. It was snowing, so it is, I think the issues are first thing in the morning and after work, during the day. Yesterday I drove by, uh, yeah, happened to move my car every two hours. I drove, and it was like three quarters, and, uh, being played on yesterday afternoon, um, two, two thirty. So it's, it's, it is the mornings and the aft, and afternoons, but, so. You tell people I had exercise. And then now as the newly appointed liaison to ZBA, we have two new numbers.
Congratulations.
And we're just, uh, approved today. That's me, I'm done.
Um, I was not able to attend the board of health meeting last week, so I think Greg might have an update for us in the TA report. I'm interested in hearing about it, um, and that's all I have.
Was that a school committee meeting that brought my notes? They're. They have decided to go ahead with, with the signs at Highland Field. They've decided on a price, but they haven't decided on the rules.
On what?
The rules. How big a sign?
Oh.
Who's, who's, what kind of business, you know, do we have marijuana businesses advertising on Highland Field?
Will they all be the same size, kind of like they aren't swainy, cause that's a very neat presentation.
Yeah, right, right, well, yeah, TBD.
Okay.
And, uh, the MBTA zoning task force may or may not be dead. I'm hoping it's dead. The planning board's taking over that function.
Do we have to do anything, cause we kind of, did we spawn that jointly with the planning board? From a procedural standpoint, how do we shut down that committee at the time it is, when the time is right?
Time is right, yeah, I, I mean, I think there's a role for them to play in outreach.
Right, oh yeah, no, I'm just saying, is that a kind of a joint?
I've got a few months.
Vote?
Yeah.
Is that a joint vote between the planning board and select board to shut that down?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, then, does anyone have? Having the task force and the planning board meet jointly every time is an awkward way to, to run that business. Is there a way, could you say, separate out the outreach to give it, so?
Right, so, well. Right, that should be a discussion with the planning board and the task force, in terms of how to, eh, deal with any, uh, fine tuning that is gonna take place. Is that something that the planning board wants the task force to still assist with, or not? And if, if not, then it can move into that outreach role. Maybe there's, you know, a couple of the planning board members who are on the task force, they can be the, the bridge. So that might be a new phase to move into. As you say, rather than having a joint meeting every time.
Picks up a lot of. Um, a path to that? So we need to have a joint meeting of the, of the two?
Yes.
And to discuss.
Path.
If I want to path forward.
Yes, and how, how the two groups want to work together in coordination.
So perhaps I should get in touch with Chris. Hopefully he can get this discussion on the planning board's next meeting, which I think is a week from today.
Right, right.
Okay.
So, a conversation between Chris and Sarah at a minimum. Just to work out some of those ideas at least ahead of time.
Jeff?
Uh, that's in the report, so.
How do the ministry, how do the?
So, um, back to parking and placards and stickers. We do have the unique situation of the, of Shark's Mouth. So the, the challenge here is, you know, you allow owners of, of properties who are not, who are not necessarily residents, they can get stickers for their cars. In this case, you have few owners who never bring their own cars here. So they're renting a car and, uh, using that rental car while they're here. So you have said that, um, placards are not good on the weekends, so that's the issue.
Owners can get resident, oh, they're not, well, they own property, so.
They own property, so they're entitled to a sticker.
Yeah.
The problem is they don't have a car to affix it to.
Okay.
So we could.
But there's, there's, but, uh, like when I had to use a rental car, okay, my car was being serviced for two weeks.
Similar situation.
I just got, there was a special placard that Diane gave.
That's what I'm suggesting we do here, we give them a placard that allows.
It's not something special or new, it's just we allow them to have the ones we already use. That's kind of what I'm, I'm not understanding what's new here.
No, the one thing I think we are allowed, and dinner's on the road, we're not getting weekends, we have to get them a weekend.
But this, what's new here is that normally you have a, you already have a sticker that does go on a car.
Right.
And in this case, that's not happening, because that, that car's never in town.
No, I understand, I understand, I'm just saying, so they wouldn't have gotten one in the mail, is what you're saying. But when I went to, you know, get my placard, I mean, I, I think Diane has other ways of looking up their residency, right?
Yeah, so that's, that's fine.
I'm just saying, it sounded like we were talking about something new, a new placard, and I think there's one that already exists that can serve this purpose.
When you got a placard.
It can, I agree with that.
Because it was usable, I could use it at the beach, I could use it anywhere.
So you, you went to the beach on Saturday or, or on some weekend, nobody asked any questions. All right, then she must have a.
Yeah, no, she can do that.
Yeah, I think she has one, yeah.
She must have a special. And I think the answer, if you're real, is yes.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
I think we just gotta make sure that they're not getting a sticker, too.
Correct.
You know what I mean, like through?
We don't wanna double.
Through the normal process, they're not automatically getting the sticker.
Well, they wouldn't have a car. They wouldn't have a registered car, then it's only going to registered cars.
That's what I'm not understanding, cause it's like any resident.
Well, they have a registered car somewhere.
Yeah, they live in Florida.
Yeah, but it's probably, is it registered in Manchester?
They live in Florida.
Doesn't have to be, you have to, as long as you're a property owner, you'll walk up to the town clerk and get something, either a sticker or a placard, that allows you to get to Singing Beach, resident parking, all of it.
Right, I just don't want both going up, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Right, we would, we would make sure we're not issuing both to the same person. And, and again, the, um, the property manager would be helping us monitor and issue.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to double check and make sure people are okay with that, so. We could, Diane, Diane, I can look that up. So, thank you, that's, that's all needed there. Uh, retreat next week?
Yes, all set up for the twenty fifth. There will be a pre-wedding dinner at the club at the same time. The club's big enough that depending on the weather, if it's, if it's warm and lovely, we get one end of the deck, they get the other side of the deck. If it's cold and rainy, we get the library and they get the big room and, so.
So what I'm hearing is that this, uh, retreat will be catered for us.
Yes.
Yes.
So it is officially a public meeting, so we do, typically we don't, a lot of people, but nonetheless, it is officially open to the public.
So.
So if you have, um, topics you wanna make sure everyone has covered, year in, get those topics in. But generally, it's, uh, you know, how did you do this past year? Some of the goals and priorities, what did we get accomplished, what went well, what didn't go so well? What, what are the priorities for the upcoming year? A little bit of brainstorming and hopefully having time to narrow that down to a manageable, manageable number. So in a sentence or two, that's, that's generally what we try to do. Welcome your thoughts and how to make that productive. Item three, as, uh, as Kathy mentioned, the board of health did meet last, last Thursday finalized their public hearing, closed the public hearing on the proposed well regulations. They did adopt new well regulations. They did modify proposals fairly significantly in terms of the testing requirements for existing wells, for irrigation systems, existing irrigation systems, they, they scaled those back and are requiring, um, every five years, just the basic, four elements, four or five elements. Nitrate, nitrite, E. coli and a couple more.
So that's not a huge cost to the.
No, it isn't. Those basics are the, they're less than a hundred dollars to me.
How is that enforced? How is that enforced or followed up on? Let's say I own a well and someone's gonna come knocking at my door if I'm in year six and haven't had a, um.
First, they have to identify that has a well.
Right, so.
That's what I'm gonna get.
So that, that is a challenge, you know, determining who actually has wells.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, for the ones we do know, do we already have an operational process to follow up and know when they're inspected and et cetera?
So, we haven't been doing that in the past, we haven't been inspecting.
You haven't been inspecting them at all?
No.
Okay, got it.
So this is new.
So it's a brand new operational process that, okay, got it.
So for new wells, um, there is a requirement to do the baseline testing, which is extensive. Be in the range of eight hundred dollars or so. The word felt that that, that additional cost compared to the thousands you're spending on the new well is actually not insignificant, but it could be rolled into the cost of the new well.
So is the cost of the testing going to cover the cost of this town having this new operational service?
No. That's, that hasn't been discussed.
So this is what we discussed when we talked about fees of other things, right? And we raised some of the building inspection fees and that kind of stuff. We, we just need, at least need to understand, um, when we're setting fees, how much of the true cost are we covering? Cause everything else falls on the taxpayer.
Right, so we're not collecting the fees for the testing. That's the, that's just between the, the property owner and the testing company and the lab.
Right, but what I'm getting at is there's gotta be an operational process to make sure the testing happens, who is paying for that?
At this point, it's being absorbed by staff time.
In theory, that's a phone, in theory, that's a phone call, have you got the test results?
Right.
There's no site visit or anything like, it's just.
No, but follow up can get expensive, right? It can definitely get expensive, so. I just think it's something to think about every time we have a new regulation, right? There's.
Correct.
We're asking staff to absorb, but unless they're sitting around tooling their thumbs, it's really not just absorbing. They're not doing something else, or they're not doing something they could be doing, so. Keep an eye on.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there any wells either? Eighty?
We don't know.
We don't really know.
I think it's in that area.
We, we think it is.
Loner wells is drinking wells, this is most.
I mean, most of the wells we have are irrigation wells. That's the majority of our wells.
Is there still talk of requiring disinfectants or chlorination, chlorinization?
For, for new wells, yes.
For new well, just going forward, or?
For, for when a well is initially brought online, before it is used, it needs to be disinfected.
But down the line?
Right, no requirement.
No maintenance of that?
Unless the testing is showing an activity infection or something.
Well, so, I mean, what's gonna happen is you're gonna start with a bolus of testing, nobody's doing anything right now, I would assume that. And so you're gonna find out, you're gonna tell a whole bunch of people, all right, start doing testing. So this isn't like eighty wells, say it was eighty wells, spread over five years. This is eighty wells as a shot, then nothing for four years, and then there's another shot.
That's why, that's why I'm poking at the oper, John's doing a better job of explaining, that's why I'm poking at the operational, right? Cause you gotta have a startup period, you may wanna phase it.
Phase it, yeah.
That may be.
And that'll, otherwise the staff won't be able to absorb it and.
Not if it's a bolus.
I just don't wanna see, you know, in next year's budget, a hiring request to go chase down errant, uh, well owners, right?
You'll have to decide how to implement that, maybe just chase a few people each year or something, I don't know.
Oh, it's like the odd and even numbers on the street, right? Something.
See, spread it out.
So, certainly a conversation that we can have with, with the board, board of health.
Is that? If, if we were to impose a fee for irrigation well owners to cover, would that be board of health, or?
Yes. Yeah, the last thing here, I just was giving you some background information on involving, involving government enterprise fund, just. So FYI, we can, um, we'll get a discussion on that when we revisit, particularly the Highland. we could, I don't know, we'll get a discussion on that when we revisit, particularly the harbor, harbor, harbor has a potential enterprise fund.
The harbor is never going to produce enough revenue to pay for dredging.
Correct.
No.
Correct. Very similar to how the water and sewer are never gonna.
Right, but.
generate enough funds for all their capital needs either.
One of the things that, that Kathy and, and we're set up was to make the launch service a separate entity. If we do an enterprise fund that incorporates all of the harbor stuff, then that gets mixed.
That's separate, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
That get mixed up, really. So suddenly we may discover that in fact the wine holders are subsidizing the launch.
Well, we, A, you can set it up as its own enterprise, um, B, you can have it as a, as a sub-enterprise, if you will, and still track it second, so that it doesn't get mixed in, I mean, I think it's been clear that you don't wanna have it mixed in, and that you wanna, uh, make sure we're tracking those expenses and revenues, so that we can say at the end of each season, did it, did it cover its costs or not?
Right. Yeah, I mean, you don't need to set up a separate fund, they should, they should have some tracking.
I got a question about that. So coming from a school system, I know, like, grant wise, sometimes when you put stuff in certain categories, it makes getting grants easier, or it can change that, if we put that into an enterprise fund, will it change our grantability for the harbor either way?
No, I don't think it would, um, if, if we said that there, that the capital expenses would never be supported by the general fund, and that, it might make it more difficult to get mods, um, so I wouldn't recommend doing that, but, um, but in terms of the grants, no, I don't see that as affecting.
It doesn't, wouldn't affect it either way, whatever works, so, okay.
Especially if there's a, if it's an enterprise fund and there's no other money, so wouldn't the grant be product specific for a, uh?
Well, my, my thought was that if you take the launch out of the harbor, it would look better if you moved forward for the harbor. Other words, you don't have that money coming in, going into the harbor.
To the.
I guess it doesn't matter.
Need, need for money, is that what you're saying, need for other revenues?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we do.
In either case, you'd wanna explain, you know, yeah, we have the, we have this hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars, but it really is.
Yeah, it's not enough.
Hundred percent for the launch service, that type of thing.
Right, right.
I mean, it might be worth exploring, like you said, having the launch service as an enterprise fund on its own.
Yeah.
Um, there's probably is some sort of a dollar threshold that typically you wouldn't en- engage in that type of bureaucracy unless there was, you know, you're dealing budgets of a certain size, so.
Yeah.
Um, that's why.
Probably no harm in fast rules, but.
Probably have a good sense, or Andrea, you know, um, so that would be my only question, you usually don't wanna segregate money more than you have to unless it's big enough to warrant that type of.
Right, right now, this is what, less than a hundred thousand bucks?
Yeah, it's under fifty.
Oh, it's under fifty, excuse me.
Yeah, so it's kinda small right now.
My only thoughts that, that we've been on is nothing, well, at least, they've already broken one launch. Let's see how it goes before we make a major restructuring, the town, the town's finances.
Yep.
Oops. Ooops.
Boats are full of oops.
Yep. I'm glad they have two.
And it was only the one that broke.
So, that's all I have.
Motion?
Yes.
To adjourn.
Second.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
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 Okay.
That's amazing, I thought this was gonna go into the mall.
Haven't actually got some, some stuff done, I don't know.
That's right.
That's, that's a perk.